Tonight, I'm Tanya Conrath, and I'm with the League of Women Voters of Athens County. Welcome to the Town Hall about Athens City Issue Three, which is a proposed municipal income tax increase. We hope that the event tonight provides you with useful information as voters. And we are joined by representatives of Athens City Government, including Mayor Steve Patterson, At-Large City Council Representative Michael McCary, Micaa McCary, and Treasurer Josh Thomas. I think Kathy Hacked... Kathy's coming? Well, the rain can cause delays, so when she comes in, we'll just let her slip right in. So I would be remiss, as a League of Women Voters member, to remind, not to remind you, that we are in the middle of election season. Election Day is May 6th, but right now, you can go up and vote in person at the Athens County Board of Elections located uptown Athens, right next to the Athens County Courthouse on Court Street. You can also vote by mail, and if you want to do that, you must submit an official absentee ballot request form. And if you plan to vote on Tuesday, I think my mic's going in and out. Tuesday, May 6th, that is Election Day. And you can verify your polling location by either calling the Athens County Board of Elections, but they also have a search engine online where you can find out what your polling place is. Okay, I'm going to begin the evening by explaining our Town Hall procedures, which the panelists agreed to in advance. Tonight, the panelists will have a chance to introduce themselves and explain their role in the city's finances and their role with the ballot issue. We will then take questions from the public, some of which we received in advance via email. Unlike some of our other forums, there's no set time limit for their responses. But in the interest of getting to as many questions as possible, I may intervene to move us on to a new question. Audience members, thank you for coming tonight. Could you please check your cell phones and make sure they're silenced or turned off? We also ask for the audience to remain quiet throughout the evening. You've probably found some paper and pencils on your chairs. That's how you submit a question. So you write your question, and if you just hold up that piece of paper, we have a League volunteer that will come around and collect that from you and bring it up to the panel, up to the question reviewers. Two important reminders when you're submitting questions. Please ensure that your question relates to the city income tax issue. Second, please write as legibly as possible. When you have your question ready, like I said, raise your hand, and a League member will collect it. And if you should need an additional piece of paper, you can also raise your hand, and a League volunteer will come and bring you some more paper. All of our questions are reviewed by our League panel, and they're going to remove questions that do not relate to the tax levy, and they will also remove any duplicative questions. We will use as many questions as time allows, but we may not have time for every question. And the forum will end promptly tonight at 6:30. Okay. Panelists, hi Kathy. No, you're fine. We're going to give you 10 minutes, as a panel, to introduce yourselves and explain the tax levy, and then we'll move on to questions. Please.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for braving the downburst that we just had. Steve Patterson, the mayor of the city of Athens, and I want to explain a couple things as we get into this, because I think there's a lot of misnomers out there. With the general obligation tax that the city has, which is currently 1.6%, that revenue is used for operations. It covers salaries, it covers health care benefits, it also covers a lot of other expenses that are just operational gasoline for our vehicles, electricity for our buildings, and so on and so forth. There's other tax revenues that come into the city. They are, they have timeframes around them, things like the recreation levy, or the Arts Parks and Recreation Levy, which was 0.1%. That's what we use to build our new swimming pool here in the city. We also have a safety levy, which again is 0.1%. It'll only run for a certain amount of time, and then it expires and comes off the tax rolls. That's what we use to, among other things, build our new fire station headquarters. General obligation revenue coming into the city, that is the primary source, as I said, for operations in the city. That hasn't changed in almost 10 years now. When you look at the Ohio economy, the economy in Ohio has grown by 24%, give or take, although the economy in the city of Athens has grown much more slowly, at about 8% over the past 15 years. We've also seen a decrease in the tax withholdings from our largest employer here in the city of Athens, which is Ohio University, where it used to be around 40%, now it's down to about 28%, 29% of tax withholdings. And that's for a sundry of different reasons. One of our primary increases, our largest increases, not a primary, a largest increase, is the health care benefits. This isn't just experienced here in the city of Athens, it's experienced across the United States right now, to where it's grown by over 28 or 58% in the past 15 years. This income tax will be a 0.3% income tax increase, which would generate about $2.6 million annually. And I'm going to pass this over now to the city treasurer, because the treasurer has been going through and looking at projections from the past all the way up into, well, the past, to projections from today, looking forward in time, which is relevant to this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I am Josh Thomas, I'm the city treasurer. I work with the auditor. The auditor and I kind of work hand in hand on a lot of things that we do. So a lot of the information I'm going to give you are things that we've come up with together. I just tried to put it into a little bit of a format. How did we get here? I think that's the real question. Is, you know, I would say at least a year ago, we began having conversations about the income tax, whether we need to look at that. In the summer, we received the state auditor's report from 2023, which was a fantastic report for us in the city, as it always is. But one concern the state did bring up was that they noticed a trend that our revenues were not increasing at the same pace as our expenses. So expenses were basically rising a little faster than revenues. This sort of confirmed what we had been talking about. So from that time forward, we just began looking at the numbers. We began kind of looking at the trends, going back to 2023, our 2024 numbers. And when you start putting those in a spreadsheet, and then you kind of extrapolate out a few more years, trying to say, let's just keep the percentage the same. Let's not say we have large increases or large decreases. Let's try and keep things consistent. You definitely find that you will see, the expenses will eventually outpace the increases in the income tax revenue. And again, we worked on these things to come up with these numbers. So that is why, as a group, we all said, I think it's time to actually talk about this. I think it's time to probably put it on the ballot. If you look at the timing of it, it was on Tuesday, November 12th, that we brought it to city council as a committee item. So the point in saying that is, obviously, there was work that went into it before that. And, you know, we've been working on this really since probably the end of the summer to say we need to bring this to council. That's kind of how we got where we are, and that's, you know, the numbers that we came up with at this point.
Hi, my name is Kathy Hacked. I have been the city auditor for 21 years. I was on city council for two years before that. And I have lived in Athens for 45 years. I love it here. I don't like paying any more taxes than anybody else. However, I've watched our budgets go up and down and all the necessary things that we do for the city that I enjoy as a city resident. And we wouldn't be asking for this if we didn't believe it's necessary. As far as any other comments, I think the mayor and the treasurer covered those pretty well. But I hope that if people have questions, we can get them answered tonight, and they can understand that we need this for our city services, and it doesn't have anything to do with other things that people are worried or concerned about at the moment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Micaa McCary, and I've served as an at-large member of Athens City Council since 2021. I am first wanting to thank the Women League of Voters for organizing this forum, and to our administration for bringing to Athens City Council this report on a need for a proposed income tax increase as early as last fall. It's our role as city council members, as elected officials, to listen to all of the concerns, points, and questions that our citizens raise, and try to help get that information for you so that you can make informed decisions at the ballot box. And I also just want to share that I have, like Kathy mentioned, I'm aware that none of us are inclined to want to pay greater income tax. There are obvious equity concerns in terms of who will be impacted in different ways. And there are a lot of reasons why we might even be cognitively predisposed to focusing on the loss of our income over the more abstract losses to public safety services that we would see in our police and fire forces. So I serve as Chair of our City and Safety Services Commission, a committee on city council, and have checked with our fire and police chiefs to get a preliminary sense of what some of those losses would be when we were unable to hire new positions to fill those lost to retirement. And these are things that council's committed to monitoring over the long term. I recognize also that I am running for our city council presidency unopposed at this time, which means I want to be transparent in recognizing that this is a, the outcome of this vote is something that all council members and elected officials are going to inherit responsibility for dealing with one way or the other, whether we have this extra $2.5 million to work with every year to maintain the services that we value in our community, or if we are looking to support the administration's efforts to mitigate those missing funds.
All right. Thank you very much for that introduction. We're going to move now to questions from voters. The first one. While it's been stated that there are no immediate cuts planned if the income tax increase fails, when do your current revenue and expense projections indicate those cuts will be necessary? And specifically, what would get cut first, second, and third? And if you ever need a question repeated, please, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you for the question. We have been doing planning in the event that the income tax increase doesn't go forward, isn't approved by the voting public. And one of the things that we will do is look at positions to where we know in the city that there are going to be retirements, and so it'll be through attrition. When we look at the pending retirements in 2026, early 2027, that we would, you know, look at those retirements in the fire department. We'll also look at retirements in the police department, and likely a retirement in the street department with one of our street crew members, looking forward in time. So there aren't going to be layoffs or anything like that. But I should probably also add to that question. With the income tax increase, if it were to be voted upon in the affirmative, and the income tax increase does go into effect, it won't start until 2026. And even then, we won't fully realize the revenue coming in for the income tax, even though we have projections as to what that'll create. We won't see that, it's not immediate. We won't see the full income tax increase go into effect really until 2027. And I say in effect, to where we're fully budgeting for the revenue that we know will be coming in. But it won't be coming in right after the election in May. It won't start, the collection won't start until 2026. So that's the way we have to sit and plan and think about how things are going to look when we, if it doesn't pass, in terms of attrition within different departments. Anybody want to add?
All right, thank you. The next question. How can you justify an 18% increase in the general fund income tax?
Well, it's a 0.3% income tax increase overall. We can justify it based upon the fact that there has been no income tax increase over the past nine years. Yet, we've had increases in salaries. We have four unions here in the city of Athens. We're a very union-friendly form of government. We have the fire, we have FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police, and then we have two AFSMI collective bargaining units. And with the collective bargaining units, every three years for each one of those bargaining units, we have to go to the bargaining table. When it comes to, primarily, it boils down to salary and benefits, to include health care. Those have gone up every year since 2016, albeit somewhere between 2.5% to 3%, 3.5% depending on the collective bargaining unit. And then we have our non-union employees, to where we're always trying to keep them at the same pace as our collective bargaining units. So the point being is that incomes have increased, and even though there has been some rise in the general fund, general obligation fund, money's coming into the city, it's not keeping pace with normal inflationary pressures and increases in salaries in the city of Athens.
That's fine. I think I would just add to that, that in trying to justify when we talk about it, Athens, this was brought up this afternoon in the thing, and I think it was brought up last week too. Athens is what I would consider to be a very giving community, a very caring community. We care about a lot of things in Athens. And I think one of the things that we're talking about is, I think most of the residents here do care about a good wage and good benefits for jobs in Athens. And so I think the city has always tried to take, as council members, I think, council members, as city administrators, I think we have always tried to take that into consideration when we do make decisions for the city. And that seems like something that's important to the city of Athens. We had this conversation this afternoon, that it's something that is important to the city of Athens. So knowing that 70% of the money that does come into the general fund goes to those wages and to this health care costs, again, we sort of put a premium on that, that that's something we know our community cares about, so we want to try and continue to keep that trend going. So in terms of to do that, it does take a little bit more money.
Thank you. The next question, this is directed to you, Mayor Patterson. And the questioner wants to know, have you met with local employees, aside from Ohio University, to discuss the impact of this tax increase on their business or their employees? If yes, what has been their feedback?
We've had two press conferences in the city building. We had the first one on the 7th, Monday, the 7th, at 2:00 p.m. We had the second one earlier today at 2:00 p.m. Again, these are just informational. We did have people come. We've had business leaders voice concern over the income tax, the increase. So we are listening to those concerns, but in terms of myself reaching out to business owners or the business community one-on-one, no, I have not.
Thank you. Okay, next question. When considering that the city built the firehouse on prime property that could have been, let me start over. How do you explain building the firehouse on prime property that could have brought income to the city?
I mean, I think the simple answer to that is, at that time, that wasn't our property. The property belonged to Ohio University. And in trying to get the firehouse built, we, you know, we worked to deal with Ohio University to purchase the property just to build the firehouse. It wasn't our land to begin with, to sell or to do anything with. That's the simple answer, right?
I'd just also add that, as Chair of City and Safety Services, I am aware that we were also strategic in selecting that location based on proximity to highways and just emergency response times.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Are there any concerns about potentially losing major employers? What steps are being taken to prevent that?
I haven't heard of any major employers who are considering leaving Athens. You know, what I have seen is the inclusion in the city of Athens, a new hospital system, a four-story freestanding emergency room hospital on Columbus Road, which is, as I've been told, bringing in 160 jobs into the city with an average income of $130,000 a year. So I'm seeing some businesses coming into the city, but I'm not hearing, for this particular income tax increase, any business coming to me saying, we can't absorb this increase.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this question before I read it. Okay. The question is, what is the likelihood of recovering the funds that were mistakenly sent to the wrong person or company on a scale of 1 to 10? Where will this deficit be made up?
Well, that money came from, I think everyone's read in the newspaper, because it's been out there, the fire station headquarters and the developer of the fire station headquarters on Stimson Avenue. The, I'm not going to put a number of 1 to 10 on that, but what I will say is, monies have been identified in a bank account. It's an ongoing investigation, as we have disclosed to the media here in Athens, to where they received the information that could be provided regarding this particular case. So it's not new news, it's news that's out there, for sure. And it's still an issue that's under investigation. So there's things that, in some cases, we don't even have the full information because it is ongoing with the FBI. Homeland Security is looking into it. Our own police department is still looking into it. There is money that has been identified in an account, and we're still working through that process to have that money returned to the city of Athens. So that's where things are at right now with that revenue. But what I do want to say, because this came up during the two press conferences, so it's worth mentioning, because I've heard individuals say that this income tax increase is related to that. They are absolutely not. They're not related at all. We're talking general revenue for operational expenses, primarily with our employees for the city of Athens, our 180-plus full-time equivalents. And this conversation that our treasurer was just describing to all of you was a conversation that took place, you know, last summer, as it continued on into the fall, and started discussing during the mayor auditor meeting that the auditor and I and the treasurer have, along with the Chair of Finance and Personnel for City Council, that we were talking about this, is that, you know, we're getting to the point where we're going to see the revenue coming in and our expenses going out are going to come to a point soon to where we're going to be potentially running at a deficit moving forward in time. And what's that going to look like with positions in the city of Athens if we don't have an income tax increase? So they're not related, the two incidents, or the incident with the scam that we became victim of, and that revenue versus the income tax increase.
This is related to that issue? And the question is, because of that scam, did your insurance prices, insurance rates go up?
No.
Okay. That answers that. Okay, next question. The city is on pace to operate at a deficit beginning in 2026. Why was the mayor's travel budget doubled when we have so many local issues that are unaddressed?
Well, the mayor's budget was doubled because I am now the president of the National League of Cities, to where I have responsibilities with NLC. They, I have to use my own budget to pay for the travel to go to NLC events, yet NLC reimburses for all of those. When that money comes back to the city, it doesn't go back into the mayor's travel budget, it goes back into the general fund, and so therefore, it never gets replaced in my budgeted account. Worth mentioning to 2024, while we're on this topic, in 2024, my total travel for going to the Ohio Municipal League, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, the Mayor's Partnership for Progress, and a number of other organizations, to include the International Town Gown Association, to which I'm the former president of the International Town Gown Association, all of those have travel associated with it, and I believe that my total travel for last year was $9,000, which pales in comparison to everything else that the city has to pay for.
The questioner asks a related question, which is, does the mayor traveling take away from time dealing with financial issues in the city?
Absolutely not. When I'm traveling, I'm on my email all the time, reading my email, responding to individuals via email or phone calls. I am multitasking constantly. And the other thing, just to bear in mind, is that any city government is only as good as the staff that you build around your city government, with my service safety director, my deputy service safety director, my city planner, the HR director, the team that I have, to conclude, my department heads, and then the partnership that we have with the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, with city council. The city continues to run effectively when I'm, whether I'm traveling or not, but again, to the question being asked, when I'm traveling, I'm still staying up on top of the emails that I'm receiving, especially when it comes to the city's business.
Thank you. The next question is, why is this information not available on the city website? Are there written materials on this that are shared?
This is for issue three?
I am not sure what information the questioner is asking, it just says, why is this information not available? I assume it's for the municipal tax issue.
Yeah. The, it's interesting, those of us who are elected officials, we can sit and advocate and discuss openly the income tax increase, much like we could with any levy. That falls within our responsibility. The government channel operates the website and puts that content up there, and therefore, I feel at this point, unless we get guidance from the Secretary of State or from somebody, to start putting the issue on the city government's website, which is managed by city employees. City employees have to be agnostic when it comes to an income tax increase. Why? Because they're the ones who will be receiving their salaries, much like all of us do, from that, they're not elected officials. We are, so therefore, we can, like I said, speak to it, but to have the government channel, which is a government function of the city, that is not operated by elected officials, although it falls under city council, it's, to me, it's just safer to not have that out there. But that's why it's important for the League of Women Voters, so thank you for hosting an event like this, and for me to be able to give the two press conferences that I did, speaking from my voice.
Will there be any written materials available for the public to read and digest?
We can certainly put together packages, you know, we've, I've asked the deputy service safety director to put together trend charts, we have that information. We also have a spreadsheet that basically looks at the income tax increase by hourly rates that someone is employed, what they're receiving. And I know that our city treasurer has put together those trend lines, and so we can add that into a package too, and make that available in City Hall for someone to pick up a package if they choose to.
Thank you. Okay. When was the last city tax increase passed? And what was the rate at that time?
So if we're talking general revenue increase, the last time we had a general obligation revenue, income tax increase, it was initiated in 2015, passed in 2016, and it was a .2% income tax increase.
Okay. Also, has the amount of tax collected increased or decreased year over year? And what is the amount of increase or decrease?
It's definitely increased, let me just open this up real quick. It definitely has increased, again, because we know people's salaries have increased, right? So if your salary increases, the taxes that you pay are going to increase as well. So we know that there definitely has been an increase over the year. I think, if I'm looking at this right, we definitely had probably around an 8% increase between like '23 and '24, you know, and that's just based on the fact that, again, as salaries increased in the area, then so would our income tax.
Thank you. All right. This questioner, the city of Athens has a poverty rate of 43%, which is the second highest in the state, with median income being $37,059. Councilman Swank said Athens residents face an 18% increase in cost of living. Do you believe the Athens residents at or under poverty line can handle these new taxes?
I mean, I'll try to speak to that. You know, it's a hard question. I think what it really goes to is really what we're here to talk about more than anything. I think this came this afternoon. We are asking the people, whether, no matter how much you make, we're asking you to take a look at your home budget, right? We're saying, can you afford this? And again, the beauty of this is, is this is why we do it this way. It's not up to us to just unilaterally say, we're going to do a tax increase, deal with it. It goes to the voters and it's for you to vote on. And we understand, we're asking all the voters to take a look at your personal budgets, no matter what that budget might be. You know, for somebody, the median income was around $37,000. To keep the math really simple, you're probably talking, if they were making $30,000, they're going to increase, that'll be $90 a year that they would have to pay. We understand that could be a big amount for some people. That could be an amount that makes them say, I don't want to do this. What we, I think up here, are committed to doing also, though, is, we're asking you to take a look at your budget, we will continue to take a look at our budget. That was some questions that were asked this afternoon, is, you know, what kind of belt tightening have we done? When you look at the budgets from 2000, what was projected, the budget for 2024 and then to 2025, what I call the other expenses, let's take out the payrolls and the salaries, because those are a little hard to work around. You know, we have contracts in place that we have to honor with our unions and with our, and even with our non-union people, we have to honor them too. But the other expenses, when you talk about the, remember Swank had just brought up computers, I remember at a council meeting, so let's just say that. That was part of the budget that I think the city did a really nice job of keeping as flat as possible. The increase was very minimal, if at all, it might not even been at all. There were certain things that they said, let's keep this as minimal as possible. That's what we need to be committed to continue to doing, is finding those areas where hopefully we don't have to lay anybody off, I mean, maybe we have some attrition and that helps, but as opposed to doing that. But we understand, we're asking you to do the same thing. We're asking people, no matter what their income level is, to look and say, is this possible? In an ideal world, I would hope that that person that's making a very little, maybe they work a job and they're getting a raise themselves, that would help. Again, somebody, maybe if they got a 2% raise, they could afford an income tax increase, but we understand that this cuts into people. But we understand, we need to make the cuts ourselves, we have to make that commitment to you. If we want you to do this, we have to be committed to sitting in our mayor auditor meetings before the next budget comes around and saying, what are we cutting out here? What can we do to lessen the burden on the citizens ourselves? So I don't know if that's the best answer, but I hope that's a good one.
In the past, as I said, I've been doing this a long time, and when we've had time periods like this where we were struggling, the mayor would ask the department heads to go through their budget and project a decrease of, say, 2%, 3%, and 5% to see how much they thought they could cut to make up for any shortcomings that we had. And we would include everybody, because there's a balance there between having, keeping all of our employees, but not having any money for them to do their job. Everybody in my office, which is only six of us, has to have a computer. Police and fire have to have vehicles, expensive vehicles, among other things, and equipment and things like that. Even the code office needs some vehicles. And so there has to be a balance from keeping our employees and giving them the tools they need to do their job, but it's not something we've never done and that we could do. And so that's part of the reason why we can't say, we're just going to go in and cut five people in every department or anything like that. We will work with the department heads to see what the city can stand up to and go from there if the time comes.
You know, I'd just add one more thing to, and so thank you, Auditor Hecton and Treasurer Thomas. Is it, yes, you know, I will sit down with my, all of my staff, department heads, and have them go through various levels of cuts within their own departments, which they do, and then we go through and decide, where can we really truly make those cuts with the least minimal impact within said departments? The other thing that we do is, we're always looking at creative ways of partnering, much like we do with Ohio University, with our fuel purchasing for our vehicles. We use the university's fueling garage, their fueling station, over by Parking Services off of Factory Street, which then gives the city and the university greater buying power when it comes to purchasing gas, and then that drives down our costs as well. And another thing that we've done very well, in my opinion, is not only being better stewards of the planet and our environment, but also, you know, offsetting our high energy costs by putting solar wherever we can. A great example is our water treatment plant, where we have a 178 kilowatt, not megawatt, that'd be great, 178 kilowatt solar array with a microgrid, which has a battery system that is collecting during the day and feeding back into the plant at night on some of our more steady voltage amenities in that. But to have something like that, it now allows us to not have to budget as much to our AEP electric bill as we normally would, because we're driving down those costs, and we were able to have that solar array installed to where we had a really reasonable amount of time to pay down the debt on those, the solar array, to where we're not, we have no debt on that solar array. It was part of the renovation project with the water treatment plant when we did that several years ago. So we're always looking at other ways in which we can trim costs, not just so much saying, okay, we're not going to have swingline staplers anymore, get rid of them, we're not buying them, or paper clips, or whatever. We're able to look at real meaningful things that have a long-lasting impact within our community.
This questioner concedes that while incomes have increased, so have rent prices and tuition at OU and tuition at Hocking College, and wants to know, does the city take that into consideration in their decision to put this kind of levy on the ballot, or do they take any other average cost of living expenses into account when asking the voters for this kind of levy?
We do. We do take those into account, and again, I'm going to go back to the last time there was an income tax increase in the city of Athens was in 2016. And it's clearly not keeping pace in 2025 and likely into 2026 and beyond, with inflationary pressures, increases in salaries, increases in healthcare costs, which is a huge driver right now with healthcare costs. But we're certainly, as Josh was just mentioning, certainly fully aware of what we're all experiencing when it comes to other pressures with, you know, ever-increasing mortgage rates, with insurance rates, or things of that nature, absolutely. But just keep in mind that the city's operations has those same pressures that come to bear for us as basically a business.
Thank you. Okay. The bill text mentions street improvements. Are there any particular projects in mind? Does this include sidewalks that have been in disrepair for years?
When it speaks to street improvements, we have a percentage of the general revenue that goes into street repaving. And we also use the gasoline tax revenue that we get from the state, which seems to be shrinking every year, much like our local government fund. But we use the two as basically match to make our street repaving program work in the city. We are putting much more effort into replacing sidewalks in the city. Currently, we got a grant from the Department of Transportation for about $1.01 million to replace or build new ADA curb ramps throughout the city. There's a lot of that project going on right now on the west side. We're also seeing it on the near east side and elsewhere in the city, so that's moving forward, but that's not this income tax-related. But certainly, where there are not sidewalks, we can start doing street repaving and sidewalk building at the same time, if there's a sidewalk that needs to be built. But at the end of the day, something else that's worth noting, and I think a lot of the people who are in the room right here know, is that if you look at Athens city code, a sidewalk in a residential neighborhood is the responsibility of the property owner. It's a piece of your own property to maintain and keep in a condition that people can migrate across, back and forth across that sidewalk.
Thank you. Next question. How does our city of Athens tax rate compare to other towns in similar size and population, especially as it relates to the student population?
Well, I had my deputy service safety director give us some information on that, and when I looked at it, I was looking at, to me, you know, cities that, like Barberton, you know, which is up near Akron area, and how relevant that to Athens, although Barberton has a 2.25 income tax for a population size very similar to the city of Athens. But when I look at a lot of others, Trotwood, which has a population of 22,940, they have a 2.25 income tax. Centerville, 25,000 population, 25,754, 2.25. Xenia, Ohio, 25,000, has a 2.25 income tax. When I look closer to us in Appalachian Ohio, I was looking at Portsmouth, which has an income tax of 2.25. Newcomers Town, which is in Appalachia, is an income tax 2. Lancaster, 2.3. Oberlin, 2.5. Kent, again, another Mac school, well, it's a city with a Mac school, has an income tax of 2.25.
So what is your conclusion, given those numbers?
Well, in all fairness, I'll throw in some that are not of that caliber, that are local. Chillicothe has an income tax of 2. Marietta has an income tax of 1.85. So when I look at comparable cities to the city of Athens in terms of just population, we tend to be, not at the median, we tend to be a little bit below the median when it comes to our income tax here in the city of Athens, if you strictly base it on population, but also if you base it on Appalachian communities.
This questioner is relating back to a statement that was made during the introductions about the amount of, the percentage of OU income tax that we get, and the question is, do we foresee the percentage continuing to decrease? And the number side was like 40% down to 29% over a number of years. Is that a trend that will continue?
That's the question of the day. We don't know, is the direct answer to that question. And there's also some information And there's also some information when it comes to income tax that's coming in, and this is something that the auditor has taught me time and time again, going back to when I was a city council member, is that there's information that comes to the auditor's office that is privileged information only to that office. And so I don't know. I don't know what individual income tax receipts look like. I don't know what the trend is going to look like for Ohio University looking forward in time. Again, that would be a conversation for me to have with the president of the university when it comes to, what does the landscape look like five years out, 10 years out, when it comes to employment at OU?
I think, again, and a lot of people know this already, one thing about the OU is we do have to acknowledge that during COVID, a lot of people worked from home. And again, and that's become a trend, you know. So, and again, if you work from home, you're not working in the city of Athens, so you're not paying the income tax. So when we talk about Ohio University, that was something that happened there, is more people worked from home. We lost, it was just, you know, common sense, that you're just going to lose some income tax on that. That's a trend that I think we're seeing is coming back, there are more people coming back to their offices. But one point we need to also make is with online classes and things like that, the auditor and I were talking about this this afternoon, that, you know, 10 years ago, you could be here in the summer, and there would be a decent number of students running around. They were here in town, they were working, so that means they're paying, right? They're in town working, the professors are in town working, because classes are all in-person. Now, in the summers, literally almost all classes are online. You have very few that are going to be in-person. I will say, I've seen more come back, but it's still something that is a consideration. So that makes it a little bit harder, when you know that the students don't necessarily have to be living in Athens and working in Athens and paying in the system, the professors don't necessarily have to be working in Athens, especially in the summertime, for sure. So that's going to, you know, continue to see a little bit of a decrease.
I will say that I've heard of efforts to ensure that a greater number of Ohio University faculty and staff are indeed working in-person on campus, on the Athens campus, so that will hopefully yield some greater revenue. But again, we're not sure until we see those results.
This questioner wants to address the issue of employees that are going to be impacted by this tax, who work within the city but don't live within the city and therefore aren't able to vote on this issue, and if you could just speak to that.
Yeah, this came up at both press conferences, last Monday and earlier today. And certainly, we recognize that. City services for all people who work in the city but don't live in the city, people who live in the city and don't work in the city, and people who live in the city and work in the city, you know, it's, the income tax is to continue to provide the quality of city services that I think a lot of people have come to expect, although often not recognize the full impact unless there's an issue with your home or your business with a potential nefarious activity from someone who wants people's things more than maybe the people do, with someone breaking and entering, with a fire, or something of that nature. And also to mention, you know, although it's not under this levy, you know, the quality that we expect with water coming to our homes and businesses, as well as waste being taken away. So it's, we recognize that. We understand that that's the same in every community across Ohio that have an income tax, as well as every community across the nation that has an income tax, a municipal income tax, that, you know, those who are working inside the city but living outside of the city are paying that income tax as well. But that's what keeps the services in the city functioning.
Thank you. This question is about how long will the 0.3% increase serve us? I think we heard that the last time a tax was implemented increase was 2016, so we're looking at about nine or 10 years. What's the projection for this increase?
I can certainly speak to it, and then I'll pass it off to the treasurer. You know, hopefully, 15 years out in time, but we're going to continue to see inflationary pressures that are coming down, you know, the, without going political on anybody, you know, the thing I'm constantly watching right now is the tariffs that are coming, and what is that going to do to supply chain at the end of the day? What's that going to do to material costs? And so that's something that we have to keep in mind as well when we're budgeting, is the ever, it seems, increasing price of various materials, which is everything from asphalt that we have to buy for repaving our streets, to plumbing and sewer underground and whatnot. But we're, you know, if things track the way they did with the last income tax increase, that this should take us 15 years out in time or more. But, you know, that's a hard projection to make when you're looking that far in advance. You know, it's almost like watching the stock market right now.
I really don't have a whole lot more to add to that than what the mayor said. You know, a spreadsheet that I tried to come up with, and again, they're just projections of the best we can do, you know, through 2030, into the early 2030s, it looks good. But again, like the mayor said, it's, you don't have a crystal ball. I don't want to, I don't want to have eight years from now, somebody say, hey, the treasurer said in 2025. It's hard to say that. You just don't have that crystal ball. I can say, like I say, we, obviously, it's been almost 10 years since we've done this. We went through a very high inflation period, COVID, coming out of COVID, and this is where we're at. Previous to that, our income tax was not raised for how many years? Like 20? About 20 years. You know, so previous to that, the city of Athens went 20 years without having to do this. And then in 2016, made the decision to do it. And now here we are again, close to 10 years, we're looking at it again.
Well, time, oh, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Sorry. Can I go back to the question before that? I didn't answer it before.
Sure. I just, yeah, we have nine minutes left, and I have a list of questions, so if it's something new, please go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add to the fact that people, and I understand that people that don't live in the city don't get to vote and don't want to pay the taxes, but the mayor explained some of that. But our laws are set by the state. How we collect taxes, what we collect taxes on are all set in ORC, Ohio Revised Code 718. And it's, some of the things that we do tax-wise are not up to us. And I would just compare this a little bit to property taxes, although in that case, we're only talking about people who own property in the city, and the large share of money that they send to the school system. My kids are long gone from being in Athens City School System, but I still pay my property taxes in town, and a large part of that goes to the school system. It's kind of a community. I know this doesn't make anybody feel any better, really, but it's just a community way of having the benefits that we do with schools and streets and police and fire and everything, everything else we get from it.
Thanks, Kathy. Next question. Has the city considered privatization of some services that are demanding, that would be met by this tax increase? Has privatization been considered?
You know, for services in the city, you know, the answer is no. Like, you know, contracting out to a third party to do the policing in the city of Athens likely wouldn't work, you know, third-partying out our fire department or code enforcement. It isn't something we've considered. We do have a third party that works with the city, because we did find it to be cost-effective for us with our IT, just maintaining the run-of-the-mill patching of our servers and computers and things of that nature for the city of Athens, because we were having a real difficult time finding somebody who was qualified to be the, you know, the quote-unquote director for IT that we could afford. Because if you look out on the market right now for an IT director, they're, in a lot of cases, you know, six-figure jobs out there. You know, we're seeing that in other sectors as well, but we haven't looked in any detail at third-party elsewhere. But there's going to be costs associated with third-party coming and administrating things.
The next question is, with an 8% increase in revenue from tax, and at the same time a loss of local small businesses, would a focus on local business be a better option? And what is being done to keep businesses and retain businesses?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah. With an 8% increase in revenue from tax, from the tax, and a loss of local businesses happening at the same time there's been concern about a loss of local businesses, would a focus on local business be a better option? What is being done to keep businesses and retain businesses?
With a what on local businesses?
A focus?
Oh, a focus.
On local businesses be a better option?
Well, I'm trying to think about how to answer this question and make sure that I'm hearing it correctly, you know. To focus on businesses, period, you know, is something that we have done. I mentioned Memorial Healthcare System coming into Athens. Whether you like big box stores or not, there's 200-some-plus jobs that were created by Menards coming here. I don't know if people are aware of this, and I had nothing to do with this, because it was pre-me being even on city council. There's 160 jobs at Kroger. There's 140-plus jobs at Walmart, you know, so, and those are real jobs. Those are jobs. And so with some businesses that have come into the city of Athens, you know, we know that that is increasing our tax base here in the city with the employees that are working there. Certainly supportive of all businesses in the city of Athens. We've seen smaller businesses develop here in the city of Athens, where we have the Hotbox Chicken, which is on Court Street. We have the Java Cafe that is down there. We have Mavets that is doing well. We have a number of small businesses recognizing that we've lost some small businesses as well. But I would contend, a lot of that is predicated upon buying behaviors, purchasing behaviors, and market pressures that we're seeing out there with an ever-changing student body at Ohio University, that they experiencing purchasing in a different, in a way that is far different than what I experienced when I was in college. We didn't have DoorDash. We didn't have Amazon. We didn't have a lot of things that now just miraculously show up at your front door, which seems to be a common occurrence at my household, when I come home and there's a package sitting there, because my 13-year-old twin daughters wanted to get something, and they want it now, and that's what they ended up doing. That's a little bit different narrative, but, you know, certainly looking to encourage new businesses to come into the city of Athens.
Okay. We're almost at the end of time here. I'm sorry, we have so many great questions, and we're not going to be able to get to them all. But the next one is, we had several questions related to inflation. And the questioner says, are local wages increasing due to inflation? If yes, shouldn't this be reflected in the current tax rate? If no, how do we justify this when wages aren't keeping up?
You know, we, I mentioned our four unions. We have four unions that collectively bargain for their salary and salary increases and healthcare benefits. We also have our non-union employees, which makes up about a third of our labor force. And since they don't have collective bargaining power, me as mayor sit there and know that they need to keep pace with our union employees' increases. And a lot of those increases are due to inflationary pressures, watching inflation going up, so their salaries are keeping up with inflation or close to keeping up with inflation. So it's, it's not that there, our employees aren't experiencing inflationary pressures, nor is our budget, for that matter. So I guess the answer to that question is, we're seeing increases in inflation, and our employees are seeing it as well.
Okay. I think that has to be the last question. I know you all have a city council meeting to get to at 7 o'clock tonight. Please join me in thanking our elected officials for participating tonight. A round of applause. And the League also wants to thank the public, those of you in attendance tonight, for submitting such thoughtful questions and for tuning in to learn more about the levy. Our thanks also go to the city of Athens Government Channel staff, Ryan Schwartzoff, for recording this event, which will be viewable on the city's site, as well as on our League social media channels. So with that, we'll say thank you and good night, so you can get to your meeting. Thanks.